We'll call the committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for September 28th, 2022 to order. Will the court please call the roll?
Council members Dixon.
President.
Good.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Roche and Berger.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Steffen.
Here.
Thorin.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of September 28th, 2022.
Will for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing and court, please call the roll.
Council members Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Roche and Berger.
Abstain.
Shaw.
Yes.
Steffen.
Abstain.
Thorin.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, the motion is approved seven zero with two abstentions. The first item on the agenda is on both the council agenda as well, so there will not be a motion needed. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. That is correct. Item A is the 2023 Health Insurance Program of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois. The city has been contracting with Blue Cross Blue Shield since 2007, one with both an HMO and two PPO programs. As part of its annual renewal process, the city solicited bids for its health insurance program with, and Blue Cross Blue Shield once again was deemed the most viable provider based on cost and program offerings. Blue Cross Blue Shield initially proposed a 12% premium increase, but staff and the city's consultant negotiated that premium increase down to about 1.83% by providing ancillary Blue Cross Blue Shield products, including dental, accident, and critical illness programs, and by replacing the PPO2 health, HCA plan, and creating a new PPO2 traditional plan option, all combined to drop that premium down to just under 2%.
Any questions for the manager at this time? Okay, moving on.
Item B is a presentation from King County State's Attorney Jamie Mossar. Ms. Mossar, at the request of Chief of Police Anna Lally, is here this evening to discuss components of the Safety Act's Pre-Trial Fairness Act component that is scheduled to take effect on January 1st, 2023. Chief Lally is also going to be providing some information on procedures that are coming into place as part of the Safety Act relating to the police department's ability to arrest suspects in matters of trespass and similar actions. Chief Lally, good evening. How are you?
Just a note, Ms. Mossar has a meeting scheduled at 7 o'clock, so we'll let her decide when her presentation is done and questions are done.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and City Manager Posel. Tonight, you will be provided a brief update of the Safety Act related to two upcoming items that will take effect January 1st, 2023. I asked the King County State's Attorney Jamie Mossar to be here this evening with me, and she will be specifically focusing on the pre-trial fairness portion of the Safety Act. And I will be focusing on the portion of the law as it relates to citations in lieu of arrests for Class B and C offenses. It's important that the community have this information on these items and also be made aware as to what to expect, and for any questions that they may have to be answered prior to January 1st, when these items will take effect if no trailer bills are introduced. As you recall, in March of 2021, I was also here with State's Attorney Mossar, and we provided you with an overview of the recently passed legislation at that time to include the two items that I just mentioned. To recap, in February of 2021, the Safety Act was signed by Governor Pritzker. In May of 2021, the first trailer bill was passed. And in January of 2022, a second trailer bill was also passed that further modified the act and improved certain sections. There are many components of the Safety Act that are already in place and have had a minimal effect, if any, on the police department because of policies and practices that were already in place. On the screen there, you'll see items number one, two, and three. Those are the items that are already in place and are already taking effect. Outside of the body worn cameras, it's a tiered process that needs to be in place by 2025. The Elgin Police Department's forward-thinking programs, policies, and our philosophy has shown that we are not opposed to reform or police modernization. And in fact, we have been doing many items that were in the Safety Act well before February of 2021, when the bill was signed into law. However, as I mentioned, in March of 2021, there were some items of concern that have since been adjusted and revised with the two trailer bills. Regarding the items that both I and State's Attorney Mossar will be talking about this evening, it is hoped that a trailer bill will also be introduced that will address some of these concerns. I am aware that the Illinois Chiefs of Police in conversations with them are working on language for a trailer bill that would help to clarify the language, to reduce liability for officers, and to also provide consistency to enforcement. Additionally, these changes would allow officers to handle everyday calls for service and to meet the public's expectations. So the first, the item that I will be addressing is the issuance of citations instead of an arrest for traffic offenses and Class B and Class C misdemeanors. So starting January 1st, 2023, if the law remains unchanged, it mandates that law enforcement shall issue a citation in lieu of custodial arrest upon proper identification for those accused of traffic in Class B and Class C misdemeanors, or of petty and business offenses, who pose no obvious threat to the community or any person, or who have no obvious medical or mental health issues that pose a risk to their own safety. Those released on a citation shall be scheduled into court within 21 days. Again, if the law remains unchanged by any trailer bills, the expectations that our community members will have when they call us for police services may not result in the same outcomes or resolutions that they may have been accustomed to or have seen in the past. It is important that our community have this information and also be aware of how our protocol, our practice, or our response will change if the law remains as it is today. And I also want to make sure the community is aware of what we will be doing and of the police department's response if nothing changes, so they do not believe or think that an officer is negligent in their duties. So I will give you a few common examples of calls for service. I'll keep it very simple, just so we can illustrate how this will work. So, starting January 1st of 2023, for example, a criminal trespass call for service. So for example, if you arrive home and see an unknown person sitting in your backyard that you do not wish to have on your property. If you contact us and wait for us to arrive, and we show up, when we arrive, we will speak with the person and ask them to leave. That is your request. However, at some point, if they refuse to leave at this today, they can be arrested and removed from the property for criminal trespass, which is a Class B misdemeanor, as they have received notice not to be on the property and that they need to depart. However, starting January 1st, 2023, officers will now need to articulate that this person poses an obvious threat to the community or any person, or that this person has obvious medical or mental health issues that pose a risk to their own safety to make an arrest. Absent this, the person will not be arrested, rather, they would be issued a citation and scheduled to court within 21 days. And the officers would have no further interaction unless called back. And I also want to stress that in many instances that occur today and in the past, currently an arrest is made, and the person is released on their signature. So commonly, we will arrest people and release them on their signature for these type of offenses. The arrest in that moment serves as the immediate interruption to stop any type of escalation from occurring. Another example would be a call for disorderly conduct. So say, for example, a store owner calls the police department stating that a person is in the store being disruptive by yelling some type of obscenities at other customers. This behavior is alarming and disturbing to the customers, and the store owner calls us. When the officers get there, they determine that the person was disturbing the peace of the store, and the store owner wishes to pursue a complaint. At this today, the subject would be arrested and removed from the store. Again, that immediate interruption to stop any type of escalation, and it resolves the matter at that time. And again, I want to stress, in many of these cases, the person is arrested and released on their signature. However, starting January 1st, the officers again will need to articulate that this person poses an obvious threat to the community or any person, or that this person has obvious medical or mental health issues that pose a risk to their own safety to make an arrest or to take that person off of the property. And then absent this, the person again will not be arrested, but issued a citation. So those two calls for service are very basic, general calls that happen routinely. And as we move forward, if the law does not change, on each call for service, we, the officers, will need to assess the circumstances presented to one determine if any arrest can be made based on the law. There may be calls for service where the parameters of the law are met because the person poses an obvious threat to the community or any person, or the person presents an obvious medical or mental health issue that pose a risk to their own safety. So there are additional procedural questions in the next few months here that will need to be answered. And in these next few months, we are working on these procedural questions along with the state's attorney's offices to ensure a seamless transition should the law not be changed, along with providing operational guidance and training to the officers so that we have a consistent amplification of the statute. And this includes guidance on what rises to the level of a obvious threat, what rises to the level of an obvious medical or mental health issue that poses a risk to the person's own safety, how we would establish a standard for determining proper identification, and also addressing any type of fingerprinting reporting requirements that are required by the state of Illinois. So State's Attorney Mossar will now provide information on the Pre-Trial Fairness Act, and at the conclusion of her presentation, I can take any questions.
Good evening. Thank you again for having me back. The Pre-Trial Fairness Act, which is set to take place on January 1st, totally eliminates cash bail. Throughout all of the state of Illinois, there has been a great movement towards this, the elimination of cash bail, because when cash bail was created, it was done so for a reason. That reason is no longer present, and we now have an antiquated system. So we are moving towards a system that is actually better, that will detain people who should be detained. Now, there are many different issues within this bill that we are currently negotiating with the sponsors of the House bill. I want to talk to you a little bit about what's been happening from the last time we came in here till today's day to discuss that. So starting off with, King County was selected as one of the pilot sites for the implementation of the Pre-Trial Fairness Act. What that means is that the state has given money to an organization who has come to Illinois to help certain pilot sites to help develop forms and procedures. Throughout all of that, we've been having great discussions, not only from the state's attorney's side, but with our other judicial partners such as the sheriff, the public defender's office, the judges, court services, on how to fairly implement this in the right way. The plan is, if King County develops all of this, then we can actually share this with the rest of the state so that everybody else doesn't have to start over from the beginning. This has been something that's been happening for months, and we have been communicating with the other pilot sites that are actually in southern Illinois because they wanted to have a difference in a larger area like we have versus a southern portion, which may have one or two state's attorneys and not as much in terms of population. Throughout the entirety of this process, we've been looking at interpretations of the law, different pitfalls that we see, successes, how forms should be written, how we can make sure that this is implemented in the right way so that it becomes a success. As a result of all that, the King County State's Attorney's Office and King County in general is ready to go to the best of our ability for January 1st as we continue to develop everything. We have created a procedure within King County of how we are going to put the PFA into effect. The PFA created three different categories of individuals. Now, the first one are the Class B and C misdemeanors, which is what Chief Lally discussed. Those are individuals who do not come to court until the 21-day time period. So the first thing that we're doing is figuring out how to get people to come into court so there's not 300 people on one day and one person on another day. So we've been working with the different municipalities to figure out what works best and what next day we can do. We've also been working with them on how to fingerprint people who are Class B offenders because by law, a Class B offender has to be fingerprinted. And so we're trying to figure out a way to do that without shutting down the court system or putting a lot of pressure on Sheriff Hayne to fingerprint everybody when a person comes to court. So this is something that we've had an open discussion with, trying to figure out how the best procedure will be for King County. And again, we've been disseminating this throughout the state so that everybody's looking at what's best for their particular county. The next category of offenders are people who are conditions of release. That means that they cannot be detained because they are not within the detainable offenses, or maybe they shouldn't be detained because it's somebody who, for example, is possessing a controlled substance, which is a Class IV felony, and that's a person who has an addiction issue. Does jail solve any of the issues that happen there? What will happen is those individuals will be brought down to the King County Jail in St. Charles, and they will go through an evaluation first with our pre-trial services and then with the public defender's office. And then the first part of our day will be a conditions of release hearing day, where what the state's attorney's office will be doing is this person should be released, but here are the conditions. So for example, in the possession of a controlled substance, it would be no further possession of a controlled substance and seeking evaluation to see if there's treatment that will help in that situation. The third category of individuals are the people who are detainable offenses. Now, there is a very long explanation, which none of you probably want to hear right now, but of which I'm speaking at 7:00 PM to the League of Women Voters, if you're really interested in it, that created six different types of cases that could be detained. Those went from forcible felonies, domestic violence, family or household cases, stalking matters, gun cases, and sex offenses. Those are cases that the state's attorney's office will have to file a petition on to detain them. In that petition, we have to list that it's a detainable offense, a person that they are a danger to if release were granted, and then any other factor that we want the court to consider in terms of detaining a person. By this statute, we only have one chance to do this, so we need to do it right. So these are hearings that are going to be held in the afternoon. We are, have applied for funding through our county board to get more assistant state's attorneys because what used to be a small hearing in the morning is now going to be a day-long event. But this is something that the public defender's office is also seeking funding for the Circuit Clerk's office because this is just a new reality of what we have, and we have to make sure to do this right. That is the program that we have developed so far in King County. I am glad to say that our sheriff has extended additional help to people within King County. We have a lot of smaller jurisdictions, not Elgin or Aurora, that can't detain people. The sheriff has agreed to hold on to those individuals while we're waiting for a hearing as opposed to having extra burden put on smaller police departments. And then there is a way to set up so that police departments like Elgin and Aurora can bring over their individuals for either the condition of release hearings or the detention hearings. What we continue to work on is to see a way to not bring the condition of release people to the jail in King County. The reason why is if it's an individual that is arrested and lives here in Elgin, we don't want to take them all the way to St. Charles and expect them to figure out a way to get from St. Charles all the way back to Elgin because there will be no duty on the police department dropping them off to do so. So we're constantly trying to figure out a different way that we can do this to make this a much more manageable system and to also utilize the resources that COVID taught us, which is Zoom court is an absolute possibility. But we also have to combine that with the fact that they have a right to an attorney, and they need to be able to communicate to that attorney. So that is what we have been doing for the last few months to get ready, and I think we are in a good position to be able to do that. We are still waiting for the funding to come in, so that is something that is going to be of concern as we get closer and closer to the January 1st date. That is not an issue for any single one of you. That is an issue that we're dealing with on a county level. So the last thing that I want to talk about, and again, I'm more than willing to answer questions, is that right now, there are several lawsuits that have been filed by different state's attorneys. King County has not filed a lawsuit in regards to this. Myself, along with two other state's attorneys, Bob Berlin in DuPage County and Julia Reitz in Champaign County, have been invited by the sponsors and advocates of this law to discuss changes, to make this so that it works for everyone, so that it does the criminal justice reform that we want, but that it also keeps our community safe. I just left our third meeting. I can tell you that I feel very positive about this. Some of the issues that Chief Lally was talking about with the Class B and C misdemeanors were discussed on our very first day, and I think we're going to see some great change. We continue to discuss that and in hope that we will have a trailer bill in November in the veto session so that way it will fix some of the concerning issues that we have and in enough time for us to be able to implement this in the right way come January 1st. There is a little bit of discussion that it may be pushed back. We don't know if that's happening, but we are discussing the fact that if significant changes are made November, we would really need time to be able to get our forums changed, our protocols changed, and then of course, come to police departments to help in terms of training. So that is my summary of what's happening with the pre-trial fairness. We are advocating very strongly to have good changes that are put into this. If you have any questions about that, I'm more than happy to sit down with all of you and kind of go over the plan of what we're looking for and discuss what our strategy is in implementing something that I think is vitally important, which is elimination of cash bail. Thank you.
Any questions for our state's attorney from the council?
That has never happened to me before.
Mr. Shaw.
Just to start off, a couple of things. One thing that I think I picked up that you mentioned was on the detainable offenses, that the state's attorney would have to take action for that to be truly a detainable offense. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Just a general thought that I guess I have, and just looking at kind of across the spectrum of different state's attorneys that we have in the region. And I think we need to be very much aware that Elgin is impacted by a regional impact. If you look at the people that come to our community and that are arrested, and you see in the report, well, where did they come from? We do have a lot of people that do come from Chicago or outside of our immediate area. I guess a concern I have, this is totally not a King County State's Attorney issue, but it's, will that be upheld appropriately? Will each state's attorney do their job? And that's a fear that I guess I have when laws are left to have such interpretation or there's action that needs to happen. I think we need to be wise that there could be situations where other state's attorneys don't take the right actions, and that could negatively then impact our communities as well. That's, I guess that's one concern I have based on what you shared. It's not a consistently measured, consistently applied standard if there's action that needs to take. That's one concern I guess I have.
I'm mostly worried about the DuPage County criminals coming over.
You're worried about?
No, I'm just kidding. Levity, levity.
So you've got the stats. DuPage is the one, for the record, DuPage, okay. I was reading an article that you had written in coordination with Sheriff Hayne dated on, I think it's the 22nd of, 26th of September, where you talked about there are, these are three of the 82 accused offenders who currently reside in King County Jail, who are scheduled to be released on January 1st, 2023. We had just a quick sidebar, I think, that might be helpful, just to kind of explain, like, there's a lot of information flowing out there right now.
There's a lot of misinformation, yes.
Let's just call it a spade a spade. There are people on both sides of the aisle that are communicating their views and using this as a little bit of a political hot button item. I think there's probably some truth to some pieces, but not maybe fully true. Could you kind of walk through kind of what those eight, what will happen on January 1st if nothing changes to those 82 people that are possibly up for release? What would that look like?
So this is kind of a two-part answer. I don't mean to lawyer this in the way that I am. But as we've been going through this process, we have all been assuming that this statute would apply not only from January 1st forward, but retroactively. And that's what we were being told was the way this was. In the meantime, we did a significant amount of research into this because the statute is silent on whether or not it's January 1st forward or it applies to anybody who's in our jail before. The research to us in the King County State's Attorney's Office is that this is only a prospective law. So anybody who's arrested between now and December 31st at 11:59 PM, those are individuals who are under our law now because they have benefited the court system. They have gone before a judge. They've had an attorney go with them. A bond amount has been posted, or they have been released. Now, there are several people who are out there who are on bond right now because they had to cash to bond out, but under the new system, I could ask to detain them without bond. We in the state's attorney's office are going to apply this perspective. So anybody between now and January 1st, nothing for us is going to change. We are not filing petitions now. We are not getting hearings ready. Now, what we believe will happen come January 1st, and it will actually be January 3rd since we're closed for the first and second, is that people will start filing petitions, and that is mostly going to come from defense attorneys. It's not going to come from my office because I am not going to use this law as a sword and a shield. They will file a petition to say that they want to be released under the new law, or they want the new law applied to them. Then it's going to be an argument in front of the judges, and we'll have to see what the judges do. This to me is concerning because I've had contact with my colleagues in other counties, and other counties are applying it retroactively. I've had a contact with colleagues who are applying it prospectively. So right now, it's going to be across the board different throughout the state of Illinois. This is one of the items that we have discussed with the sponsors of the bill, and they recognize it. They agree to it, and they are working on language as to how to make it so it's consistent among the 102 counties. The second portion of what you were talking about is what crimes are detainable versus releasable. There are crimes that just by the nature of the crime itself, that they cannot be detained under the Pre-Trial Fairness Act. Now, some of those are misdemeanor offenses, which most of the time aren't being detained anyway. There are Class IV felonies, and then there are other felonies that are not specifically enumerated. So again, there's this A1 through A6 of enumerated offenses that I told you. Anything that's not in that, that is a Class III or higher, we, the state's attorney's office, can argue that that person is a willful flight. If we say that, if the judge finds that they're a willful flight, they stay in. But if it is a Class IV felony, that is not one of those enumerated offenses, they are never detainable. I gave some examples recently, an unlawful restraint that has nothing to do with a domestic violence. So I restrain Chief Lally. That is not a domestic violence. That cannot be detained. There is aggravated fleeing and eluding, aggravated DUI, hate crimes, threats to a school, aggravated assault with a gun. These are all Class IV felonies, and because they're not listed as detainable, I cannot ask for them to be detained. Now, what I can ask is for the court to put conditions on them. Obviously, Chief Lally should not see me during the time period that I'm being prosecuted for unlawful restraint. There's many things that we can do to still protect people, but we can't ask for them to be detained. That was the robust discussion that we had today with the sponsors and the advocates of the bill of how to expand this list so it really encompasses community safety, but also do exactly what it's supposed to do, which is criminal justice reform. I hope that answered your question.
I think it did, and I guess the summary that I would say is, to kind of summarize it from my point of view, is I guess I would ask the sponsors of the bill to balance public safety versus the rights of, the rights of these offenders as well, or these accused offenders, I should probably say is probably the correct.
That is correct, and I do think that they're willing to do that. Our conversations have been very productive so far. I do think that they are legitimately at the table with good intentions to make this the best law possible. I know we, as the state's attorneys there, the Chiefs Association, the Sheriff's Association, we are there too.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I think you've answered enough of my questions. I guess what concerns me, so a couple of things still concern me, I think, is that, you know, that, you know, until the bill is completely cleaned, and some of the choices that state's attorneys can make is a concern of mine for a regional impact that I think we sit in a very impactful area next to Cook County. I'll be very frank, and I guess my biggest concern, and what we've seen kind of come from Cook County, that's one of my big concerns. from Cook County, that's one of my big concerns. I guess I'm also just concerned at how the legislation has made it thus far without it being changed. Like, how does something so, I guess I would say obvious from my perspective, of a bill that's passed back in February of 2021, why is it taking this much pressure for it to be changed? I guess that's also a concern of mine, just from a kind of the overarching macro perspective, that this is pretty serious. I mean, there's some, there's some people that I don't think should be released, that under this, these changes, unless something's amended, it's not, not good.
Part of it was strategic. Our first trailer bill happened because that law was going to come into effect in June of 2021. The second trailer bill that we negotiated came for the January 1st of 2022. Now we're involved in what's going to happen in January 1st of 2023. So this has actually happened consistently and with our knowledge. It's just a part of the legislative process. But I do think the majority of the people who you're concerned with, this law, has been designed to keep them in and not give them the ability to bail out. And this is important, because this, I think, is missed, and I think I mostly miss it saying it. I have offenders who are out there who should not be because of just the crime they committed and the facts that are associated with it. I don't want somebody to get out of jail because they have the money to get out of jail. That is not a fair system. And so there are so many things in this law that are positive about this. And one of them is that a person who commits murder, sex assault, domestic violence, violent domestic violence, they're not walking out the door because they have the cash in their pocket.
Nope. And I think everyone can agree with that. I mean, those are the types of people that you don't want coming back into your community, even if there is some sort of tracking system or things like that, because those aren't flawless either. I guess what I would say is, I think you're being very kind to our judicial process, or to the legislative process. I won't put you on this, but I think she's being very kind to our legislative process because this was communicated, that this was not a rushed bill, that this was completely deliberated in all of this, but in reality, it feels like, when you look back and actually look at it, that the smees of how this would impact our communities, the right smees weren't brought into the process on how this bill was drafted. That's a Toby opinion, not a Jamie Moser opinion. This is a Toby opinion. And guess what I'm seeing, is calling balls and strikes. And so that's kind of my concern, looking back retroactively. We try to, up here, I feel like, have a lot of conversation prior to approving something so that we don't have to go back. I feel like we do a pretty good job of at least hammering through and beating it up, and then passing something. I guess that's just the model that I feel like we should be following at the state level as well. I'll hold off on additional questions. I'm curious to see if anyone else has additional questions, but I do thank you for coming out here. I'll be honest with you, I think it takes a lot of courage for what you're doing. I understand the political environment that we, that you live in, that we all are in, and so I appreciate you actually stepping up and being a part of a solution to this. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Moser this time. Ms. Rauschenberger.
Not that I'm an expert on this at all, but I don't think the cash bail system is any better, and it's been proven for years and years and years, it's not better. So I don't think we should argue to keep that versus trying to move forward with the new system, and to be fair to everyone. And first of all, and I think Illinois is the first state to step forward and to try to make our justice system fair for everyone, and for the accused, as we said, not everyone is guilty, and that should be a part of our thought process here. And so I think that, and I think when we're talking about discussing this for years now and putting a pilot out in various counties, means they are working on this. I think they're spending a lot more time than we usually do on any issue. So I don't know where you come from that. I think they've been working through this for a few years now. And actually putting it into, you know, step by step by step, because it is a change, I think that's, you know, admirable, and I appreciate that King County is part of it. I guess one of my thoughts was, I hope there is going to be some funding. And second of all, will there be, that will be, will that mean increase in staff, like lawyers? Okay. So I hope that there are people out there, and we're not like dialing to India for legal advice or something.
No, and we have been talking to law schools about that too, because the bar results just came out. We have people who are just going to be sworn in. And it's lawyers, it's advocates, it's support staff, there are court security that's going to be necessary, certa clerks. So the great thing about this is we are going to create some jobs out of this. We have talked to the state about the funding issue, because it can't just come from King County at this point. They are receptive to that, and they're looking into it.
Okay. So that was my, but I'm glad that we're working toward this reform. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stephan.
Well, Jamie, thank you first for coming. I think this was good of you, and for trying to just give us the facts and let us, as a body that runs a city of about 120,000 people, think about and consider how it's going to affect us and what we're going to do about it, and explain how the implementation's going to go. But as I suspected, what might happen, it's kind of devolved into opinions and people kind of talking about things beyond our scope. And that's all I want to say about that, other than just to say that we should probably stop at this point, because we could talk about all kinds of issues that we have no control over, but we would certainly like to have opinions on, and we do have opinions on, but that's not what the voters of Elgin have put us here to do. So, you know, that's all I wanted to say, Mayor, is that, you know, I think we should accept the reports and the updates that we've gotten, and they were very well presented, and move on.
Okay. Anything else from Ms. Moser? Respect to her time.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Lally at this time? Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, nope. Sorry, yes, I do just have a.
Nice try.
Thank you. My question was just on the articulation process and the criteria for it. If it's been developed yet, can you walk us through what that would look like?
For which process? I didn't hear.
For the articulation of if somebody's having a mental health issue.
Yes. So that's, we're going to have to provide some training with the officers and get some clarity, because we want to ensure that there's a consistent application to what that actually means. Some things are going to be very evident. You know, someone's presenting a mental health type of issue, they're an emotionally distressed person, those things are going to be pretty evident. Or someone's doing some type of act, they're making verbal statements, I'm going to harm this person. But there may be some instances where it's going to be borderline. So we're going to have to provide some training to the officers, working with the state's attorney, having conversations with Jamie in terms of, you know, what would you be looking for to make sure we're working within the parameters of the law? So within the next, you know, month here, we'll make sure that we finalize that procedure, get the training out to the officers, and just prepare for January 1st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger.
So it's interesting that you call this the articulation process, but is there not, at this moment, some sort of articulation process or process of elimination when it's someone, an officer would be arresting someone anyway? Wouldn't they consider many of these same issues?
Yeah, I mean, for an officer to arrest someone, you need probable cause.
Yes, okay.
And so the probable causes for the arrest, but for the citation to be issued, you're needing probable cause because they're violating the law. That's one issue. The issue is whether or not you can actually physically arrest that person and remove them from the location. So each circumstance is different. It depends what they're saying, what they're doing, what the victim is saying, what the witnesses are saying. So like I said, some things are pretty clear-cut, but some things that, you know, it might require us, and what I don't want to happen is where officers are making decisions based on, you know, what they believe, and each officer makes a different decision, we need some consistency.
Right.
At least some parameters and framework in which how we can uniformly apply whether or not we're going to make the arrest based on the harm issue.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. This begins the Mike Pubens portions of this evening's agenda. Oh, no, it doesn't. Sorry, that's the next one after this. First is Item C, Design Engineering Services with DLA Architects Limited for the DuPage Court Revitalization. This is a Amanda Harris and Mike Pubens joint venture. DuPage Court, as we all know, has been long used as an area for conducting public gatherings, small to medium-sized events, and an area for outdoor seating for restaurants in the downtown. With the downtown experience and an increase in residential and business occupancy, the demand for public space like DuPage Court remains strong. With DuPage Court's regular use continuing to grow, an attendant need for the whole-scale rehabilitation of this vital downtown area has become necessary to repair the buckling pavers and aged underground water sewer and sanitary lines running under this area. These necessary infrastructure repairs, combined with grant funding secured through State Representative Anna Moller, provides the city with an opportunity for enhancing the usability of this space through creative space-making. Staff solicited feedback on proposed design elements and future uses for DuPage Court from area businesses and residents. This evening, the recommendation is to award an engineering services agreement to DLA Architects Limited to complete the design work and prepare construction documentation necessary to begin work next spring.
So moved. Moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Rauschenberger.
Yes, so the monies that our Representative Moller has gotten for us, is that for this part, the design, or actually the construction?
It's for the, it can be used for the design and the construction.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Thorne.
I'm curious as to this work going on, and of course, in conjunction with the work of the new apartment building, in hopes that there's no confliction with construction and equipment and people.
Agreed. And that's, Amanda Harris has taken the time to work with all of the impacted property owners affected by the DuPage Court revitalization. The owners and contractors of 40 DuPage Court are certainly have been amongst those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stephan, you had a question?
Just a quick comment, now that we've gotten the presentation just a little while ago with some larger pictures. There's a diagram of the space, and my only comment is that I'd hope that the materials used would match what's in the rest of the downtown, the streetscape. This looks like they may be introducing some different colors or surfaces or whatever, but to the extent possible that it kind of all matched, so we don't have another overlay of a new set of materials and things and so forth. That's my only comment.
Anything else? Ms. Paul.
Thank you. Yes, I also saw the presentation that just kind of, just recently was added. I guess I thought that maybe staff was going to go through it a little bit.
We can do that. I mean, this isn't anything new. Amanda Harris is present, and that's why we added that information. So with a couple minutes or a couple seconds, we'll have Ms. Harris out here, and you can ask additional questions.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to, you know, put it up on the screen so everyone could see it.
Look at that. There she is. All right.
Yes. Another excuse to have Amanda come out. I appreciate that. But I'm excited to hear about some of the features, some of the thought process, and selfishly, some of the arts components that I'm sure are part of this plan. So if you can kind of walk us through it, that would be appreciated.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So as Manager Kozel already described, this is a project that we're able to do with the help of funds secured by Anna Moller, and that gave us the opportunity to do more than just fix what was broken. So we met with various city folks, we met with the downtown businesses, we met with arts organizations, we met with basically anyone who has any reason or any desire to use the courtyard, and said, what do you want? What do you hate? How can we make your life better? And that really led to the design. The firm that we're proposing to work with, DLA and HLR, both really understood what we were trying to do. Yes, all of the underground has to be repaired. That's extremely important, and no one is undervaluing that. But while we're there, let's make this space something that can be usable for the next 50, 100, you know, 2,000 years. And so they did their job well. They looked at the site, they looked at the entire downtown. When you look at the schematic design that's there, I think I actually have it ready to pull up here to share with you. Ding dong.
Next page.
I'm probably going to mess this up, but I can walk you through a few of the bigger pictures. When you look at the design schematic, you see a few things. Most notably for me was the layout of that gray paver pathway in the middle. That is reminiscent of the river, and so they really tried to bring in the various components, which was really nice. Another thing that was really important was making sure that that space was entirely level. So where the court right now has a lot of those big planters and those kinds of things, all of that's being removed to make this space level, which makes it more easily occupiable for markets, for events, even for the businesses and the residents who use it. So flexibility was a really, really big component, as was paying attention to its location. As Councilman Stephan noted, it's really, it's in a historic location. Downtown Elgin is historic, but also there are newer components. So how to really thread that needle carefully was something that they paid close attention to. So you'll see that there are new archways, there are safety bollards there, the canopies displayed on the south side there provide the shade that those businesses and residents use for their outdoor seating, and make the space more usable all year round, really. As we've talked about before, increase electrical capacity, make gathering for events much more feasible. And those round areas that you see there serve as kind of natural gathering spaces. Again, it's all grade level, but using that creative place-making, it seems like, hey, let's go sit in that circle, kind of a, kind of a way. So that's really the thought process that went behind all of this. And then, as noted in the memo, we met with all of those businesses and said, hey, what do you think? And outreach is continuing to those folks to make sure we're being really thoughtful and responsive to those requests.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger.
Thanks. So the shade canopies and the benches are all movable?
Shade canopies are not, but the benches, tables, and chairs, they're movable when we decide to move them, is the best way I can put that. It's not as if it's going to be, you know, yard furniture that you can get at Home Depot. These are actual things that do require staff support to move, but do remain flexible so that if we do need to move those tables, those chairs, those benches, those planters, we can do so with relative ease.
And so I know the number one user of this area is L's.
That's correct.
So those shade canopies work with their outdoor seating typically?
They do. Yeah. And I mean, it's always a continued conversation to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to take care of the courtyard itself and serve everyone in the area, but also not stepping on their toes either. So we did have a sit-down meeting with them, they love the design and are excited to see those shade canopies come in.
Okay. And the reason for the arches?
The arches, sorry, took me a second to.
The entrance thing or whatever?
Yes, ma'am. So on the, let's see, that's the east side there, that arch which faces Spring Street, that is going to be an arch. And what we have kind of landed on for the other side is more kind of a complimentary sculptural piece. It still says DuPage Court, and it mimics the arch material. But the idea is that a lot of people say, DuPage Court, well, if you don't know what that means, you don't know what that means. So it really is a place-making opportunity, and also welcomes people to the space itself. So when you come down DuPage Court, when you're at the top of the hill, you see that big beautiful sign that says DuPage Court, and you know exactly where you're supposed to be.
So it's really identifying the location.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stephan.
Just a quick minute. Every time you go into more detail, it makes me think of another question. 40 DuPage Court is being redeveloped. Councilman Thorne referred, referenced that, but their first four spaces programmed to be a restaurant. If that occurs, is it possible to be? If that occurs, is it possible to be able to put seating in their quadrant of this courtyard?
Yeah, absolutely. So because the seating is flexible, that's something we can easily, easily work with them on. And we are already in conversations with the, the building owners and those that are doing the renovation, to make sure that we're not double doing work, and making sure that we're being thoughtful as we install these things.
Great, thank you. Excellent.
Mr. Shaw.
The seating and the tables that are on the south side of that courtyard, that's, that is something that we're putting in as well?
Yes, yes sir.
So we're putting tables and chairs in there for the sole purpose of it being utilized by a private business?
Well, the tables and chairs are going to be consistent throughout the courtyard itself, so that's not the only space they're going. This is just drawn this way as a rough schematic. In coming weeks, you'll see a more thoughtful drawing, so you'll be able to see that those, those benches, those tables, those chairs are actually all throughout the courtyard.
I guess my concern is that the tables and chairs put in those locations that will be for primarily the purpose of those businesses, I would not want us to be managing, because I feel like then there would be the maintenance and the upkeep of those that, to be honest with you, feels like they are currently the, on the responsibility of the business owner, that I feel like that should continue to be their responsibility going forward.
Anybody else? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Quick question about the materials. Can you speak to a little bit about the sustainability of those materials, or the opposite of, you know, if there is not much, and why that is, please?
We have not quite reached that point in the, in the process. We had actually a follow-up meeting today, and that was one of the main items we hit upon, is the desire to make sure that this project is sustainable, that that green space is, is there, and that the historical components are acknowledged and complimented, and that it's flexible. Those are kind of the four key leading points that we gave them to move forward. So I don't have that information for you today, because we're just not there in the process yet.
Okay, and one follow-up, quick question. To those green spaces that exist, and they're not super large, but are we thinking, just thinking at this point, natural grass or turf? Have you even gotten that far in that thought?
We have not yet, but thank you for the question.
Yep.
Mr. Shaw.
Just one more question. Would businesses be allowed to put structures in DuPage Court once this is done? Because right now, I know like L's does, they've fasted their own facilities to our, what's kind of the going-forward arrangement that we want to work with them? I guess, yeah, I'm just kind of curious about that.
I think that's definitely a conversation that is ongoing, and something we definitely want to involve corporate counsel in, as this is, it's technically an easement type of a situation. Obviously, we're gonna do what we need to do to protect the, the infrastructure and the, the materials going in, without stepping on toes of businesses, but ongoing conversation.
Gotcha. I mean, just don't get me wrong, I mean, I still want to be able to enjoy a nice shake out there, that's not.
No, it's a mall, don't say shake, it's a mall.
I'm not being clear, and my intentions here to the public, you know, this is.
Ms. Paul.
Thank you. Amanda, could you speak to, because I'm not sure if I missed it, are there any public art components included at this point, or anticipated?
Not at this point, in this particular schematic. That's another thing I brought up, is how we incorporate this into the greater downtown public art, you know, kind of plan that exists. I did bring up the idea of asphalt art, it probably won't actually be on the court itself, but could be in the surrounding area. It's, it's something that is in the forefront of our minds, though, as we continue the design process.
And, and so just for clarification, we're, the item that's before us is to hire DLA Architects to come up with the construction bid documents. So that will come back before us for final approval, and so hopefully we can see some of, some of these questions that have come up regarding our, regarding sustainability can be incorporated in those specs.
Yes ma'am, that is the intent.
Yes, so I just wanted to reiterate that, because I, I think those, those two components in particular are things that this council and our community have, have come to expect with our projects, so that, that's definitely something I would like to see incorporated in this project as well. Thank you.
Ms. Harris, I would assume, this is a pretty significant project, and I would assume, you talk a lot about the, give us a nice aerial view of what goes on, on top of the ground, but there's significant work that's gonna go on, on the underground as well. This is gonna cause some serious problems for pedestrian travel for many, many, many weeks downtown. And I think that they need to be aware of that, and when this project starts, it could go on for months. And so once you get into underground, that material's been down there for years.
Long time.
And been around long enough to know that they never move as smoothly as you think. So I think that's a fair thing for the people that are, use that mall, use that, including the DNA uses it for the, for their events, and the people that travel down there, that it's gonna be a kind of a step carefully when you walk through.
It sure is, yeah, that's definitely why we've already started communication with the, the impacted area, to make sure that we're trying to stay as ahead of it as possible, make sure we're setting expectations.
It's always difficult, it's like working on an island in a little spot like that.
Yeah.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you Mayor, I just, I noticed that in this packet, there really isn't much about the electrical system, but you did mention it, right?
Yes.
Because that's something that has been very difficult to work with when we do these events, and I was just concerned that I didn't see anything on there, or did I miss it?
We hadn't nailed down the specifics, I can tell you what's been discussed at this point, which is that there would be increased amp service all throughout the court, and instead of it being in one or two locations, it would be at three locations on the north side and three locations on the south side. So easily accessible, but increased amp service as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved nine zero. This time I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at seven o'clock. So moved. Second. Moved in second to adjourn, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned, we'll reconvene in about five minutes. We'll call the regular meeting for the Elgin City Council for, excuse me, October 12th, 2022 to order. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon? Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stephan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of amendments to the previous meeting of September 28th, 2022. So moved? Second. It's been moved in second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Abstained.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Abstained.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved seven zero with two abstentions. We have a couple of communications this evening, and the first proclamation we have is for the Crop Walk. So Joanne Hartman and Mike Montgomery, please join me at the board. Whereas healthy food is essential to thriving, to growth, and to a prosperous wildlife. But those without land to grow food or money to buy food are likely to suffer from hunger. And whereas 800 million people around the world are hungry, including 11 to 12% of Americans, 3.2 million children die from hunger each year, and 66 million primary school-aged children around the world go to school hungry. And whereas the Crop Hunger Walk has been organizing cities and towns across America to fight hunger around the world, and they're in their communications for 50 years, Elgin has been a part of the Crop Hunger Walk since 1983, raising over $686,000 in the fight against hunger. And whereas Michael Montgomery, the honorary chairman of the 2022 Crop Hunger Walk, who is also the executive director of Food for Greater Elgin, provides client food choice for over 10,000 clients each month, who launched food delivery services to senior housing complexes, low-income neighborhoods in Elgin, and to families who are confined to home for medical reasons, opened Food for Greater Elgin's doors to the Elgin Community College students, resupplied Elgin area food pantries and soup kitchens with the help from Northern Illinois Food Bank. And whereas the 2022 Crop Hunger Walk is an opportunity to unite our community in hope of raising funds and support for Elgin's food pantries and soup kitchens, as well as church world service, intentionally drawing attention not only to the problems of hunger, but also the need for solutions and dedication to improving the quality of life for all our neighbors, no matter where they live, and continually supporting peace and security for all people. Now I, now therefore I, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 16th, as Crop Hunger Walk Day in Elgin, and encourage all citizens to support observances that raise public awareness concerning hunger and poverty, their causes, and their solutions. Congratulations.
One learns that hunger is both a local problem, but also a global problem. We open the newspapers today, and we read about famine in Somalia, we read about impending famine in Pakistan, and we know full well the hunger that exists in our own community. In America, just over 50% of the population will be eligible for some kind of public assistance sometime during their life. It's something that's a part of our existence, and it takes all of us working together to respond effectively. I thank the city for its support of this, and thank all of you who are walking or sponsoring, and if no one's asked you yet, you know, see me afterwards. Thank you.
Jack Wheatley? Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation have reached epidemic stages, and it is imperative that visible unified prevention, education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the need for drugs, the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, and whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas the Coalition for a Safe and Healthy Elgin, the Boy Scouts of America Three Fires Council, and the Fox Valley Young Marines further commit their resources to en- Fires Council, and the Fox Valley Young Marines further commit their resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore I, David Captain, Mayor of Elgin, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during the Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free Elgin.
Sishi would like to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation honoring Red Ribbon Week. That's almost a tongue twister, right, Mayor? Red Ribbon Week is the nation's largest and longest-running drug awareness and prevention program. Red Ribbon Week began after the kidnapping, torture, and murder of DEA Agent Enrique Camarena in 1985. Camarena had been working undercover for Guadalajara, Mexico for over four years. His efforts led to a tip that resulted in the discovery of a multimillion-dollar marijuana manufacturing operation in Chihuahua, Mexico. Corrupt politicians working for drug traffickers kidnapped Camarena and his pilot, Captain Alfredo Zavala Avalar. After the men were found murdered, citizens in Camarena's hometown of Calexico, California donned red ribbons in his honor. The red ribbon became their symbol for prevention in order to reduce the demand of illegal drugs. California Congressman Duncan Hunter and teacher David Dillon soon thereafter launched Camarena Clubs in California high schools. In 1986, club members presented a proclamation to Nancy Reagan, First Lady of the United States, who then initiated nationwide anti-drug programs. The following year, parent-teacher organizations in California, Illinois, and Virginia wore red ribbons in late October and November. In 1988, the first National Red Ribbon Week was organized by the National Family Partnership, proclaimed by the U.S. Congress and chaired by Nancy Reagan. Here in Elgin, we will continue this tradition of diverse community partners engaging the community to reduce the demand and misuse of drugs. Sishi, the Coalition for a Safe and Healthy Elgin is a coalition made up of 12 sectors of the community, such as government, business, civic, faith, healthcare, parents, and youth. The National Institutes of Health studies show that if a person doesn't misuse substances by age 18, that they have over a 96% chance of never turning to the misuse of drugs for the rest of their life. This is why Sishi focuses its efforts in the encouraging of middle-school and high-school youth that they are too important and too valuable for their family, friends, and the community to turn to drugs to cope with life events. This is why we further focus our efforts to instill in our youth the belief that no matter how difficult, how sad, or how hopeless the current climate may seem, that hope, happiness, and the perseverance to endure is found in reaching out to family, friends, and the community, and that as we reach to the future together, we'll make a brighter, truer, and more hopeful Elgin. So thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor Captain, for this proclamation of Red Ribbon Week. Thank you.
That brings us to the portion of the agenda where we recognize persons present, and as our policy is, we will recognize persons that are not on the agenda tonight. First, and when your item, if you wish to comment, that is on the agenda, we will call your name when the time is appropriate. First person to sign up is Rosie Valencia.
Good evening. My name is Rosie Valencia, and I'm here tonight as co-race director for the 45th Annual Elgin Valley Foxtrot, and I wanted to come here tonight to celebrate and report some good news, and more importantly, to say thank you, along with several of our Kenyan farm runners that are in the audience with me here today. As some of you may recall, our group was asked a couple of years ago to take over this special event that has been a longstanding tradition in Elgin for over 45 years. We took over this challenge and couldn't have done it financially if we didn't have the help and operational support of the City of Elgin, as well as some of our sponsors and a large number of volunteers, as it's a big event. You made a financial commitment to help keep us and help us keep this event going, and we were able to host the Foxtrot for the last three years. Due to the pandemic restrictions, the 43rd Annual was virtual, so we were only, we only had nearly about 300 people who were able to race in their own neighborhoods. And then the last year, the 44th, was, took place in person with social distancing protocols, and we had about 700 runners. This year, June 5th, was, we held the 45th Annual Elgin Valley Foxtrot in Elgin, and had almost 800 runners with over 100 volunteers. We had a number of spectators, many local businesses that provided their in-kind services, generous sponsors, and we had a great post-race party. Altogether, we shared in this event, and it was such a great community event. We also wanted to share with you that we added a new component this year to the race, and we encouraged local participation from the schools. So we added a category for the youth for 19 and under. And the school with the most race participants would be awarded this newly-established trophy, traveling trophy called "The Fox." And this year, Elgin High School was the winner of this trophy, and we will be presenting it to them. In addition, we expanded our packet pickup this year. We were able to partner with the Downtown Neighborhood Association and participate in the Elgin Farmers Market on Friday, and then Danny's Pizza on Saturday before the race. This helped us with registration check-in and obviously the flow of people there. And similar to last year, we requested participation of the nonprofit organizations in the form of volunteers in order to make this event succeed, and they were able to receive proceeds from the benefit of this race. This proved to be very productive, as their engagement in the race helped resulted in a success, as they had vested interest in this race with us. With all that said, we are very pleased to announce that we were able to hit all of our objectives, but most importantly, even though there were additional costs, as we all know have been increased and our budgets were not expected, we were still able to raise a significant dollar for the nine local nonprofits that participated. In fact, almost $2,000 was given to each of the following organizations: the Boys and Girls Club of Elgin, the Elgin Lions Club, the Kiwanis Club of Elgin, Aid Elgin, the Elgin Salvation Army, the Walk to End All-Timers, the Elgin Public Museum, Cal's Angels, and Friends of the Fox River. It could not have happened without your financial support, with your great city staff, and our local sponsors and partners, and the Kenyan farm runners, and the nonprofit organization volunteers. We hope we can count on your support again next year as we continue to run this event and have, provide valuable resources to these nonprofits. We also help drive additional revenue to our local businesses and deliver a really fun event to our community. We plan to open registrations soon, earlier than next year, and all the additional assistance would be appreciated and help offset some of these additional costs. And just a special recognition to your staff. Again, it was very impressive how well the departments worked together and provided us support to help make this happen. It was critical. In particular, I'd like to acknowledge Kate O'Leary, Ryan Alford from the Public Works, and Sergeant Mark Whaley. Each of these individuals and their respective teams were really an absolute pleasure to work with, and we look forward to teaming with them again next year. Also, a special thank you to Mayor Captain for coming out and actually that morning and being our official race starter. We also had a Boys and Girls Club youth member who actually sang our national anthem to kick that off. So, Mr. Mayor, each of our race participants and volunteers received an actual event t-shirt, which I'm wearing here, and we didn't want to exclude you. So, and we also have one for each of the council members. So I would like to make sure that you, the clerk, has the other sizes to share with the rest of the members, but this one is for you, and we want to, again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a side note, I've gotten a reputation as being a starter. I started a 5K race out in Streamwood because they saw me start the one in downtown Elgin, so I guess I'm spreading outside of Elgin's boundaries now. Yeah, right, exactly. You're gonna have to have some more races, though. Thank you very much. That brings us to bids. First item is job order contract evidence room HVAC system.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we award this to FH Passion in the amount of $61,658.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. That brings us to other business. The first item is consideration of petition 25-22, 28 Tyler Creek Plaza, conditional use to establish a commercial event space with an existing multi-tenant building. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tyler Creek Plaza is located at the northeast corner of Big Timber Road and McLean Boulevard. The subject tenant space is the northernmost space, and a series of spaces anchored by the Butera Market Grocery Store. This is Big Timber, this is McLean, and this is the Canadian Pacific Railroad, which also hosts the Milwaukee West Metro Line. Here is Butera. This is Multifilm Speedway Gas, Mobile Gas, and the Big Skillet Restaurant Pancake House. These spaces closer include, among others, an auto repair shop, Alfaro Mexican Restaurant, a laundromat, and these are physical fitness facilities. G&amp;A Super Fiesta requests approval of a conditional use to establish a commercial event venue in the 3,600-square-foot tenant space currently occupied by Universal Church. Universal Church advised the property manager that they no longer need this location to serve their congregants. The tenant space features a large, open floor plan that is perfect for social gatherings. The applicant plans to rent the facility for birthday parties, graduation parties, baby and wedding showers, and other like celebrations. Music accessory to a permitted event is allowed, but the space cannot be used as a music or concert venue. Events may include the service of food provided by off-site caterers and alcohol. The applicant is aware that they will need to apply for and obtain a liquor license prior to the service of alcohol. The applicant plans to complete minor interior renovations, but no exterior changes are proposed. The applicant is present. Should you have any questions, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? I would request, Mr. Malat, if the petitioners are here, that something be considered about after a party or an event on the weekend, that they police the parking lot nearby. And there's some, been issues there with keeping the area clean, and want to make sure that they do a best job that they can, and just walk the area and make sure that whatever trash is out there is picked up.
The applicant is nodding his head.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Congratulations and good luck. Item two is consideration of petition 35-22, 2285 to 2295, Valley Creek Drive, preliminary and final plat of subdivision of a property into two lots. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the southwest corner of Royal Boulevard and Valley Creek Drive. Royal Boulevard is here, this is Valley Creek Drive, and Randall Road is off onto the left. Russo Power Equipment is here, this is the Nursing Home River Crossing of Elgin, this is Elgin Fire Station Number Three, and this is Home Depot. The property is improved to the 24,500-square-foot, two-story office building and a surface parking lot with 94 spaces. The applicant requests approval of a subdivision of the four-acre property into two lots. There are no proposed changes to the existing building or its parking, and there are no proposed developments currently suggested for Lot Two. Both lots exceed the minimum requirements for lot size and lot area. The building setbacks on Lot One conform to the requirements of the A/B area business district, and Lot One has more than the required number of parking spaces. The applicant is available. Should you have any questions, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval, subject to the conditions.
Move the second for approval. Subject to conditions, any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Malat? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Item three is consideration of petition 39-22, 818 South McLean Boulevard, conditional use to establish a drinking place, service of alcohol as part of an existing restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property contains the McLean Plaza Shopping Center, and it's located on the west side of McLean, between College Green Drive and Torrey Pines Drive. McLean is here, this is College Green, and this is Torrey Pines. The 46,000-square-foot strip shopping center is home to Bungie's Tire and Auto and several other users. Fox Valley Shooting Rage is in this building, this is the offices for Elgin Township, this is Bushy Mobile Home Park, and this is Arminetti's Wine and Spirits. The subject tenant space is here. Emily's Mexican Grill requests approval of a conditional use to serve alcohol at their restaurant. The applicant states dining customers have often requested alcoholic beverages. Emily also proposes to expand from about 1,400 square feet to about 3,900 square feet, essentially doubling the amount of indoor seating. There are no proposed changes to the restaurant menu or hours of operation. The applicant is not proposing any exterior changes to the building or the site. Any new signage in the future will meet the zoning requirements. If the conditional use is granted, the applicant must also apply for and obtain a liquor license prior to alcoholic service. The applicant is present. Should you have any questions, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval, subject to the conditions. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Subject to conditions, any discussion? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, just want to just comment, I think it's exciting to see businesses grow. I mean, we get plenty of new businesses that come in, and some have challenges and do leave, but seeing an existing business that's starting out small and growing is exciting as well to me, just to build on the foundation of success that they've had before, so congratulations.
Ms. Powell?
The applicant's here?
I believe so. Zumela Bonia? There's, there.
Behind the post.
I just want to give you guys a shout-out. I live in the neighborhood. I've been to your restaurant. I love your nachos. I'm excited to see you expand as well, and I think it's a good addition. I mean, like, you can't really have guacamole and chips without a beer, or a martini or something. So I think this is, this is a good addition, and I think it will complement your restaurant very well. So, good luck to you. Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is approved 9-0. Congratulations. Brings us to item four, is a public hearing of petitions 14-22, 15-22, and 16-22, 37 West 142 Hops Road, future 2560 Hops Road, annexation and preliminary and final plat of subdivision and planned development as a map amendment to construct a new townhome community with 130 units and 23 multiple-unit buildings. Declare the public hearing open. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located on the north side of Hops, west of Randall Road. Hops is here, this is Randall Road, and this is Boz Road up along the top. This is the Canadian National Railroad that bisects on a horizontal, or on a diagonal across the image. Elgin Fire Station Number Seven is here in the upper left. This is the Edgewater Subdivision. This is the Meyer and Menard Shopping Center. Walmart and Sam's Club Shopping Center is here, the Reserve Subdivision here, and this is the Creekside Subdivision, and Otter Creek Elementary School is located there. Avalon Trails LLC seeks to annex approximately 15 acres of land and construct 130 townhouses. The design and orientation of the townhouses will continue the desirable residential land pattern established by the Reserve Townhouse Community located immediately to the north. The townhouses would be arranged within 23 buildings that are oriented The design and orientation of the townhouses will continue the desirable residential land pattern established by the Reserve Townhouse Community located immediately to the north. The townhouses would be arranged within 23 buildings that are oriented along walkable, well landscaped streets. Each building would contain between three and seven units. Buildings would be three stories high except corner units that are two stories high. Also, like the townhouses in the Reserve, the exterior elevations of the buildings in Avalon Trails would be well-designed, highly articulated, and feature a combination of masonry and fiber cement siding. Two-story corner units would be about 1,600 square feet and provide homebuyers with multiple options, including different configurations of living rooms, dining rooms, and kitchens, and either two or three bedrooms. Three-story units would be about 1,900 square feet and have either three or four bedrooms. Each townhouse would include an attached two-car rear-loaded garage accessible from a private driveway, and each townhouse would also have two exterior parking spaces on their driveway. Avalon Trails is a linchpin to the future street system in the area. The orange streets map the arterial and collector system as it is today. Avalon Trails would connect to the Reserve Drive, completing the critical north-south connection from Boz Road to Hops Road, and significantly enhance public safety. The subdivision would also allow for a future western connection to Creekside, the Creekside Subdivision, further advancing the street connectivity goal of the comprehensive plan. Avalon Trails would also begin an important eastern connection that would ultimately lead to Randall Road. A future developer of the northwest corner of Randall and Hops would provide the majority of that street, as well as the north-south piece that will eventually connect to the Walmart and Sam's Club Shopping Center. The Kane County Department of Transportation continues their work to realign the Randall and Hops intersection, and the design of Avalon Trails is consistent with those ongoing efforts. Avalon Trail, oh, there we go, that's what that looks like. Avalon Trails would have one access point at Hops Road, and the applicant would upgrade Hops to city standards. The applicant provided a traffic study that was included in your packet that substantiates the proposed design and improvements. Avalon Trails would include a neighborhood park with a gazebo and extensive landscape, including 160 shade trees, 49 ornamental trees, and 124 evergreens. The development would continue efforts in this area to annex unincorporated land that is surrounded by the city of Elgin. The applicant is available should you have any questions. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined within your packet.
Any questions for Mr. Malat? Ms. Rocheberger?
I guess a couple comments. I'm, thank you, Mark, for that, and I am happy to see that we have a long-term plan with connectivity and transportation options, that it's not just the sprawl of one, you know, development not attached to another development, so I'm very excited to see that. I guess my other question was, I know the parking is behind, is it like an alleyway that you're, they're proposing?
Correct. If you look at the upper left-hand corner here, let me see if I can turn on some type of a pointer.
I think the one, the developer wanted to make a comment.
Sure. Mr. Powell, did you want to come to the?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I didn't catch that when I was going back to my seat. Parking?
Repeat the question, Ms. Rocheberger.
Oh, yes, so, you know, I was interested to see if, I read that the parking is like behind the building, do you have something that's similar to like an alleyway?
Yes, all the buildings will be, the garages will be on the back of the building, so that there's no garage door domination on the front streetscapes, and it, you know, it just keeps it, all garages off alleys or lanes.
No, that, that's great. I know there, we have some developments in Elgin where the streetscape is basically a parking lot, so this is great. I really appreciate that.
Right, so on the image here, this main road going north-south through the site, that is connecting to the Reserve, uh-oh, sorry, hold on one second there. All of the houses that front on that main road would look like the image in the upper-right, and then where it turns a corner, you would have the lower, the lower-middle image, so that you didn't have a side that was, that was uninteresting. Then everything to the left and the right are internal courtyards or alleys where they're all rear-loaded garages.
Right, okay, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
One other question would be, as we consider development, continued development west, great to see the connectivity, I think that's really exciting. Do we have further thought process about public transportation, bike lanes, walkability, things like that?
So, this does have sidewalks on each side of the street, and they connect to the north to the Reserve that hooks up then to the Kane County Trail System, and then ultimately to Boz Road, Boz Road being a major east-west part of the bike trail system. You're not going to get, at least at this point, public transportation on Boz Road, but it would, it is not out of the realm of possibility that when we get everything connected along Hops, that pedestrian systems will get someone closer to Randall, where they could in turn catch a bus up and down Randall, or eventually to downtown.
Right, okay. I was gonna say something else, but now I can't think of it. That's okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that we have thoughtful development west of our community, I'm excited about that.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, thank you for your investment in the development of this community. I remember once upon a time, there was nothing on Randall Road, and so now to see it develop the way that it is, especially in this area that has been stuck between, you know, I'm gonna say Otter Creek Elementary and Walmart, with the Reserve being in the back, and I used to live in the Reserve, and so it's a very similar community and setup to what you're saying here, and I loved it, my family loved it, so I think that the future residents that will live in this community are really going to like it, and I'm seeing a lot of these communities pop up like this. There's another community, which is a single-family home community on Blum Drive, Bloom Drive, I'm sorry, right down the road, and it's like an oasis, right? So, you know, everyone in that community, they know each other, and so when you have those smaller communities that are just offset a little bit, you get that kind of connectivity between people, which is, you know, really important too as well, so thank you for developing this. This will look like it's going to be beautiful, and I look forward to the rest of Randall Road between here and back to Walmart being developed, so.
Thank you, we feel it's a contribution as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Powell?
Thank you. I have a few questions regarding, because I'm familiar with the Reserve, and I understand that the configuration of, kind of like, the design of the buildings and the rear-load garages is very similar to what is currently at the Reserve. Now, what I notice, when I visit my friends that live over there, it is really hard trying to park close to where they live, because if you've got two buildings that share that little, that little alley where the, where the garages kind of face each other, there's really no room there for folks to park. There's barely enough room when you go in there, it's, to really do a U-turn and turn around to get out, and I noticed that the proposed departures, and I'm assuming this is what I'm looking at, one of the areas, it's the vehicle use area, street yard setback, is that what that refers to, or is that something else?
That's something else.
Okay, but what I'm referring to, I guess my question is, for the developer, have you given some thought to widening that, or is it going to be just like what we have right now at the Reserve?
So, at the Reserve, they have a narrower building-to-building, garage door-to-garage door essentially, than we do. We've met the new fire department requirement, where they wanted a 26-foot wide lane, and then 20-foot wide driveways, so we're gonna have a lot more distance between our buildings, and it'll have two parking spaces behind each garage door, as well as two parking spaces in the garage, so it's gonna be a lot more parking and a lot more open feeling with our, with our project.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that our code changed since the time the Reserve was built?
Yes, yes. There's much more space for cars to navigate behind the buildings than what was originally provided, and the departure that you were reading about is, it's one of those, you gotta check the boxes in the lower left-hand side of the site. There's one small turnaround, again, to accommodate the, the fire department right down in here, that it has to extend a little bit in front of the building, and it requires a departure from our zoning ordinance, so that's what that, that's what that singular departure was for.
Got it, thank you for circling back to that. The other question I have is for the developer. I live in this area as well, so I'm excited to see this, this development move forward. Are you seeing more of a trend towards, I guess I'm curious why you chose townhomes versus single-family homes? Can you kind of speak to that a little bit for this particular area?
Well, there's a need for both product types. I think as house prices continue to climb, because we've had, you know, incredible cost increases in the last 18 months, it's, you know, insane in a way, and it gives, it's an alternative for people who can no longer buy a single-family, they can still buy a townhouse and still have a, buy a home, you know? So I think there's a need for both. Our pricing will probably start around three and a quarter, and go up from there with the new costs and such, so, yeah, houses are getting more expensive by the day recently, so we'll, we'll take care of that little segment of, of homebuyers.
Great, so you, basically, you definitely still see a robust real estate market for townhomes?
Yes, oh, yes, yeah, that's a really good, strong market. The single-family market's been really strong. I mean, as of recent, you know, things have tapered off a little bit because of the interest rates, but there'll be a time that it'll come back, it always does, and we hope to be there for them, so.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Anything else for the developer, Mr. Malat from the council? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to the development? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this development? Seeing nobody at the podium, declare the public hearing closed. Brings us to item five, is consideration of petitions 14-22, 15-22, and 16-22, 37 West 142 Hops Road, future 1650, 2650 Hops Road, annexation, preliminary and final plat of subdivision and planned development as a map amendment to construct a new townhome community with 130 units and 23 multiple-unit buildings. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval, subject to the conditions, any further discussion?
I think Mark should repeat himself, I mean, it's a separate item, you know?
We're paying attention. We're catching up.
You're my speed reading.
Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is approved 9-0. Item seven is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment agreement with the Horton Group Incorporated for Insurance Brokerage and Consulting Services regarding the city of Elgin's health and associated benefit programs. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is approved 9-0. Item seven is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment agreement with the Horton Group Incorporated for Insurance Brokerage and Consulting Services regarding the city of Elgin's health and associated benefit programs. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is approved 9-0. Item eight is authorizing for payment to Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center for Police Academy attendance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Brings us back to consent agenda. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Brings us back to consent agenda. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Miscellaneous business.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole. So move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn back to the committee of the whole, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. Now I'll entertain a motion to reconvene the committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to reconvene committee of the whole, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we're reconvened. I believe that leaves us on item D, Mr. Manager.
That's correct, Mr. Manager. Now it's time, Mr. Mayor, City Engineer and Public Works Director, Mike Povens' portion of the agenda. Let's consider items D and E as companion pieces of sorts. These involve proposals for replacing both the Chicago Street Bridge and the Kimball Street Bridge. Obviously, we'll have to vote on the design engineering services for both of them together, but Mr. Povens is here with representatives from Trans System Corporation, who the staff is recommending to begin doing the work on the rehabilitation and reconstruction of the Chicago Street Bridge. And for the Kimball Street Bridge, we have representatives from Alfred Benish and Company.
I'm dead in the water, PowerPoint's there.
There it is, we're trying.
You don't know any songs.
Chew on that.
Is that IT director?
Page and IT director. Page and IT director.
Pull the plug on it, always works for Toby.
My father-in-law used to just turn the power off and start over again. There we go. All right. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. We're here to talk about two items, the Phase One engineering studies for the Kimball Street Bridge rehabilitation/reconstruction and the Chicago Street Bridge, both over the Fox River. So they're two separate items, but we're going to kind of work them together. I do have representatives from both Trans Systems and Alfred Benish, who are going to speak a little bit and introduce themselves to you. They'll be the team that we'll be working with for quite a few years, and I guess that's how I'd lead in. This is really the first step in a pretty long journey to get these done. I've just put together a simple timeline up there at the top of the screen, and we're talking tonight about Phase One, which is in the gold color. And Phase One studies for these bridges will take anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months to get through. There's a lot to it. There's a lot of reviews and approvals by other agencies that have to be gained, so some of that's out of our control. But, so just this first part is going to take a couple of years. Once we get through Phase One and get design approval, we'll be able to start Phase Two, which is, so Phase One is, we often call preliminary engineering. Phase Two is then his final engineering. That'll take us another eighteen months or so. And then we'll get to construction. You can see our construction phase is in the blue bars. Right now, we're tentatively planning on Kimball Street being rebuilt in twenty-twenty-six, probably taking a year and a half to two years. Tentatively now, we're going to wait and do Chicago after Kimball Street is done. We aren't going to do them both at the same time.
Wonder why.
There'll be pitchforks and torches here, and I'll just retire and leave, so. But you can see on the chart, I cross-hatched a section of the Chicago Street Phase One, or excuse me, construction, because we're going to do Phase One and Phase Two concurrently. And depending on if one of the projects has a delay or one of them speeds up, we might switch that construction schedule and move Chicago up first if it's ready and the other one's not. So at the bottom of that sheet, it's a little hard to see, my apologies for the font size or text size, but just a breakdown of the costs, and I think what I really wanted to show here is to finish these completely, so the preliminary design, the final design, the construction, and the construction engineering, which is the inspection, material management, et cetera, is going to be just over forty million dollars by the time we get through. It's absolutely our intent to seek out state and federal funding for these projects. We've already received a commitment to get eighty percent reimbursement on the Phase One, which is what we'll be considering tonight. We think it's highly likely we'll reach those goals on the remaining phases. So out of that forty-plus million, the city will pay about eight million. So it's really a great way, you know, everyone here pays taxes, road taxes, et cetera, so it's a really great way to get some of that money back through the federal government to help with some of our own infrastructure. So what's Phase One? I'm going to sum it up in a very simply, again, there's a lot more to it. It doesn't take two years to get through a one- or two-sentence description, but it's really to complete all engineering tasks and the development evaluation coordination and selection of a preferred design. So that's one main goal, the selection of a preferred design. Our consultants are going to help us work through different alternatives, different options, et cetera, and we're going to choose one of those that we decide to move forward with at some point. There's a, the second main issue is the environmental clearances. That's a big part of the Phase One process, so it'll be evaluating and clearing all the environmental issues with the Federal Highway under the Environmental Policy Act. Again, very time-consuming, so that's the second big step. And then, lastly, we need to get design approval from IDOT and the Federal Highway Authority. So we'll come in, we'll say, here's our preferred design, we've done all the environmental work, here's what we want to build. That gets approved, then we can start Phase Two. So, tonight, as I said, we've got representatives from our two consulting firms. We went through what's called a qualifications-based selection, where we put out a request for qualifications. They come back and say, here's what our company's about, here's what we've done, here's our experience, here's our experience in Phase One, here's why we're good at this. We have in-person interviews with the firms, and out of all that, we had ten applicants on one project, nine on the other. We ended up selecting Alfred Benish and Company to do Kimball Street and Trans Systems to do Chicago Street, both very impressive in all phases of the qualifications, selection process. So with that, I think we'll go in order. We'll start with Chicago Street. So we've got John Fortman and Matt Baldwin, they're from Trans Systems, they're going to talk a little bit about Chicago Street and their process, and then we'll bring up the folks on Kimball.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today with you. We're excited to talk to you about Chicago Street. I live not too far from here, and I ride my bike underneath this, and I've traveled it many times. You really have a job of a city, and it's exciting to live in this area. So, our team, my name's John Fortman, I'm the principal in charge on the project. With me is Matt Baldwin, as Mike mentioned. Matt is the project manager. Our team is comprised of HLR, which will be doing the survey, environmental, and hydraulics, Wang Engineering, which will be doing the geotechnical, and Hitchcock Design Group, which will be handling architecture. So on the project, obviously, community outreach is critical, working with project stakeholders is very important in Phase One, and we really want to work on those relationships. We have worked with all the agencies on the screen here, and so this is always a key part of moving a project forward and picking a preferred alternative. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Baldwin, he can talk a little bit more about the process.
One of your speakers is blowing his horn out the window there.
Yeah, there you go. Good evening, Matt Baldwin, I'd be serving in the role as project manager for this project, as John and Mike mentioned. Just going to talk a little bit about the project and provide a little bit of an overview of some of the key milestones and tasks that we'll be working on as part of the project. We always start with the project understanding before we take on this project, so we can understand the scopes, scope and goals of the project. We know that Chicago Street is a gateway to downtown. It connects, obviously, the west side of the river to the east side of the river. That's a critical component of this project. As John just mentioned, there's an abundance of stakeholders based on the location of the project and the key areas, whether it's Metro or Pace or the business, just immediately adjacent to the project, so that's going to be a critical consideration throughout the Phase One in particular, because that's where we have the public involvement process. It has a rich history in aesthetics. This version of the bridge dates back to the nineteen thirties. There are several architectural features that we're going to try and maintain and evaluate as part of this Phase One process. And then it's received bridge funds, as we talked about, which sets generally the schedule that we're going to adhere to as we progress this project and move it forward. And really, we state the goal down there, but the goal really is to create and identify a cost-effective, aesthetic, multimodal solution for this bridge that gets pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists across the bridge safely and efficiently. So how are we going to do that? How are we going to go through this Phase One process? There's data gathering portion that we start with, but really it's going to hinge on this initial structural evaluation. We're going to look at different alternatives, different considerations, we're going to evaluate costs as part of that, and we're really going to be careful to make sure that we're adhering to the policies of the local, I'm sorry, of the state historic and preservation societies as part of this bridge, since it dates back to the nineteen thirties. And like I mentioned, we're going to come up with a typical section for the roadway that's best to facilitate multimodal, so vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians as part of that. And really, our goal is when we come up with that preferred alternative, we want to minimize impacts to those adjacent properties, but also the environmental resources. The Fox River is a key environmental resource for this community, as well as, you know, everyone down the Fox River, I live in Geneva, I understand the Fox River is an important part of this community in this corridor, so. So historic bridge experience, that's, I've mentioned that a couple of times now. One of the reasons Trans Systems is well aligned with this project is we have Mike Cuddy and his team on staff. Mike has worked on seven of the ten oldest bridge rehabilitations in the entire country. We have a team, we have experts that deal with these kinds of structures, and so they're going to evaluate, what are those key aesthetic and historical features, and then evaluate that as part of the Phase One process. And so that gets tied into the envi, or the public involvement process, but also that coordination with the historical agencies, and so make sure that we're not only respecting that historical element of the bridge, but to make sure it's also efficient process, so we don't get bogged down into it too much, because they know how to navigate them. And then just some of the, a little more detailed schedule, Mike did a good job of identifying that. We're really looking to identi, or start early in twenty-twenty-three, based on accelerating the contract with IDOT that lets us hit the ground running a little bit sooner. It also lets us align our projects between the two projects, so we can target being complete with engineering in twenty-twenty-six, which would give us that flexibility, which, if one project's ready before the other one, because it could potentially run into a myriad of challenges related to one of these two projects, either one would be ready to go at that point, and then you don't have two projects that are going concurrently. And so with that, I'm going to pass it back to Mike.
Thank you, Matt. And then we've got Andrew Keeshaw and Kurt Knoss from Alfred Benish and Company. Come on up, share a little bit about their approach.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you to the City Council of Elgin. These projects are wonderful to tackle, they don't come around all that often. These are typically the ones that civil engineers think of when they choose this profession, so we're very excited at the opportunity to work with Mike, his team, and the City of Elgin to deliver these. Speaking with you today, my name's Andrew Keeshaw, I'm the Illinois Division Manager for Alfred Benish and Company. I also serve as the project principal on this project. I work with Kurt, make sure he has all of our vast resources at his disposal to deliver for you guys. Kurt is an incredibly talented project manager who's delivered many multidisciplinary projects all throughout the Chicagoland area. Important to this audience, he's also a resident of Elgin, and we are glad to bring him here to work on this one. I think in our practicing for proposal, you didn't get to work in the line that he studied for his structural engineering license at the library that's adjacent to this project, so. We'd be remiss without mentioning our project team. Of note, Huff &amp; Huff on environmental metro strategies to assist in public involvement. Rubino with Geotech and HLR on the survey side. Of note, Rubino and HLR, both local to the Elgin area. It's been fifty years since we've worked with City of Elgin, based on our records. The last time was when the Kimball Street Bridge was done in the nineteen seventies. Benish has been around for seventy-five years in Chicago, and these projects are what we do. We're very excited to tackle these projects, and specifically your project, so now we'll talk about your project, I'll turn it over to Kurt for that.
Good evening, everyone. As Andrew mentioned, my name is Kurt Knoss, I will serve as the project manager on the Kimball Street Bridge project. My wife and I moved here in two thousand and six, we've raised our family here, so I'm very excited to work on this project and contribute in some small way back to the community. The key to any Phase One project is managing the process to arrive at the, to obtain design approval in a timely fashion. Our two, our main approach is to create a project-specific outreach plan and engage key stakeholders, as well as utilize a range of communication strategies and communicate with appropriate visual tools. This is the stakeholder engagement part of the project is very critical. One of the, during the early phase of the proposal process, we identified an opportunity to improve the connectivity of the Fox River Trail at the east end of the bridge. Right now, currently, the users have to stop at Kimball Street on either side and then work their way eastward to Grove Avenue to cross Kimball Street. During the Phase One process, we will evaluate many alternatives that will look into connecting the path at the east approach of the bridge. Also, we feel that this improvement offers an opportunity to gain some state and federal funding related to extending the path, and that's something we will explore further during the Phase One process. A little hard to read here, but again, Mike did a good job with discussing the schedule, but right now we anticipate a twenty-four-month Phase One design schedule, starting in early twenty-twenty-three in January, with hopes to gain design approval at the beginning of twenty-twenty-five. And we will closely monitor each of these tasks throughout the process and also hold periodic progress meetings with the city to make sure we stay on schedule. So thank you. Any questions?
So we've covered a lot of territory, just a few minutes belies the amount of work that's going to happen in the next two years to get this design approval. So, but again, didn't want to overwhelm with details of the process. I just wanted to add to the, both firms have already worked together very well. We found some efficiencies in the work distribution, so we're not duplicating surveying or duplicating hydraulic studies necessarily. They'll both be working together on the aesthetics of the bridge, and that'll be part of the Phase One process, is coming back to this group with different alternatives for design and making a decision as to what we want these bridges to look like. So with that, again, we've covered a lot, but I will open it up to questions.
Any questions for Mr. Povens or the, Mr. Thor?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mike, and gentlemen, for your presentation. Immediately what comes to mind, which I'm sure will be questions from the citizens, is that will one entire bridge be shut down, or will a lane be open as you build the other lane?
That's actually part of the Phase One process. We're going to look at traffic control options and management of traffic plans. We've already discussed, you know, we have options. We could close half the Kimball Street Bridge down and keep the other half open. If we stage it that way, the project is highly likely to take more than one construction season. Something else to discuss, whether we would choose it or not, I don't know, but you could theoretically close the entire structure and possibly get it done in one year. So we're going to go through those alternates, we're going to look at what that, how that impacts traffic and how we move traffic through the downtown area, and we'll come up with a decision. Again, some of that, we can take public input at the, you know, as part of the public input and stakeholder process and see. It's going to be challenging, right? I mean, everybody's driven through construction zones and traffic management is often very difficult and.
Well, it'll be especially challenging being that they're each a different way.
Yes.
They're one-way bridges.
Yeah. Well, Chicago Street, right?
Being two different construction firms, will they look the same?
They may look the same if we choose that route, if we want them to look the same. So, so my perspective on going into this, we're talking about two bridges, but we've got four bridges downtown that cross the Fox River. One option is, we want them all to look the same. Another option is, we want Highland and Chicago to be similar, because they're kind of twin bridges. There's an option to, Kimball is the largest of the structures, takes the most traffic, maybe that's a totally different design. And so those are all things that are going to be explored in this Phase One process, and we'll come back to you and come to the public for those discussions to see what we want. We could do a replica of the Golden Gate Bridge on Kimball if we wanted to. State won't cover all that cost, though, so.
It's a little small. Thank you again.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for your work.
Any other questions? Mr. Good?
Thank you for the presentation and for securing some funding to help us out with this. As part of the Phase One for the Kimball Bridge, is it a given that the bike path is going to be going underneath that, or is that going to be up for debate in the design process?
Again, we'll look at alternatives, different ways to do it. Those all have costs associated with them, they have risks associated with them, how well they'll work, et cetera. I think the image that was shown on the screen showed an enclosed tunnel, basically, so one of the challenges with the current path is it floods occasionally, right? So, so we'll look at options to prevent that from happening, so the bike path stays open. We may choose to have an open path similar to the other bridges and just accept that we may have some days where it's closed, but. Andrew, you want to add anything to that? I don't. Have I got it? Okay, all right. Have I got it? Okay. All right.
Bridges as long as you guys want those.
To add to that, we will look at underpass option as well as overpass, and we will look at all the different alternatives to see that, to see what makes sense.
Ms. Rouschenberger?
Thank you to our engineering firms, and I do appreciate that you live in the area and support our city. My, I guess the one big question would be, what if dam removal happens within this timeframe?
We're considering that. We're working with Mr. Wies. His group is handling the dam removal. A little bit unpredictable as to when that might happen, so I think we're going to have to approach this from both angles, that we may have to design a bridge that has the dam still in place and possibly design a bridge that has the dam removed. It'll change the size of the beams and the clearance and the number of piers you need and things like that. So we're really going to have to closely monitor that progress as we move along. And again, at some point, make a decision, you know, if the dam is delayed, do we wait? Or do we do a design that accommodates the dam, knowing that at some point it'll be removed? And we may have an additional pier that we wouldn't otherwise have had, but. See, I told you, there's a lot in the Phase One.
Yeah, there's a lot. Yeah, I know.
It's, it's a big job.
And also, I mean, we've talked, you know, about traffic out west and how our connectivity in our city and one of the bridges is two-way and one of them's one-way. And we want to have bicycle paths. We want to have walkable places, bike paths going underneath, overpasses sounds. So is there, do we have, you just mentioned, do we have a, a general traffic plan for Elgin in any big way?
In regards to bicycles and pedestrians?
Or everything?
We have a bicycle plan. It's a few years old, but we, you know, we try to incorporate. I, I can tell you, going into this, we're, we're acting as if these are going to be active bicycle and pedestrian routes. Chicago Street currently is fairly well set up for that. Kimball, a little bit differently, obviously, the intersection with Route 31 and the rail line there make that challenging, so we're going to look at both of those. We've talked about possibilities of incorporating some improvements at the Route 31 intersection to try to make this all work better together.
I guess I'm just looking forward to this idea. Does Elgin need a bigger traffic plan that incorporates everything, maybe in the future? Or as, as I look at these different things, maybe we should be considering putting all of it together.
We won't, we won't allow Chicago Street or Kimball Street Bridge to be a barrier.
Right.
Two bicycles or pedestrians.
And there wouldn't be, for example, any discussion about changing Chicago to two-way. It'll stay one-way.
It hasn't entered the conversation at this point, no.
Okay. And then I don't even, you know, if I think about these bridges, do they look alike, those two? Does, they don't look alike? So one is more of a historic structure than the other? Because you didn't mention for the Kimball Street, we didn't talk about historic. I can't think about how they look.
No, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, Kimball Street is, is not.
Bring him up to the microphone.
Kimball Street's not historic, and it's just a, a very simple concrete decked-in structure, whereas Chicago Street is historic with, with arches, I believe. And so there's a more of an aesthetic and historic element to Chicago Street.
Okay, so that's where we can think about designing similar, different, or, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to say a few things. I always say that we have to understand as residents that these projects take a while. And you're talking maybe about a year or two. But on the bright side is that it's something that's going to be useful for many, many years to come, maybe another 50 years. Right now, when the gentleman said that he can talk about bridges all day, I was wondering while we're at it, how about like, can you build a bridge where a train can go over? Because we're going to have this issue with the trains that are coming with the Canadian Pacific and Kansas City. Because that would be, that would solve so many problems, you know? I think while we're at it. I just wanted.
I can tell you, engineers can do anything if you're willing to pay for it.
There you go.
That, that's it, right? Maybe an under, underwater bridge? I've been thinking of all these things. No, I, and you appreciate that you're gonna, finally going to tackle this, because this is something that affects the living in Elgin, you know, the quality of, of life. And these bridges are so important. And when you get stuck with the traffic and then you add what we've been talking about, the trains, and then you have Route 31. I was just wondering, is it, why two different companies? That's something that somebody had asked me. I'm, I'm sure you have your reasons for that. I, I like the fact that they're going to be working together on this, though.
Sure. So, so the process started with what we call a request for qualifications. And that document lays out the goals of the city for this project, basically. We want to build this. It's, here's the details about it. And from that, we solicit statements of qualifications, which is the consultant's response. And they say, here's how we can meet all those needs of the city and all those stated desires for this project. And then it's a process of reviewing those qualifications, looking at the makeup of the staff who are going to be working on the project, looking at their approach to the project. Here's how we vision this process working from tonight, well, before tonight, through ribbon cutting. Involved in-person interviews, each of the consultants, well, not all of them. We had a, a short list that we invited in to give presentations, and that involved a question and answer session. It was staff from the engineering department that was the selection panel, and that wasn't trying to intentionally exclude anyone, but at this point, it's still fairly a technical project, knowing that there was going to be public involvement and, and plenty of opportunity for input for many other voices and perspectives. So going through that process, then, the, the selection team says, we think this company is best qualified to build this project today. And that's how we selected it. So the two companies represented here today did very well. We had others that scored very close to the top. And it's, it's not an exact science. You know, we, we score them and we tally points and things like that, but it's the professional opinion of the staff and myself that these two companies are best prepared at this time to do these projects. It could, they both could have gone to the same company. We didn't feel that was the best choice in this case, so. And we've talked about the historic nature and, and Trans Systems' experience working on historic bridges. They mentioned they've worked on seven out of the 10 most historic bridges in the country, so that really gave them an advantage in that point, but. So I was rambling there, but I, I think I answered your question, but.
Yes. And then my last question, when we talk about the Kimball Bridge and Chicago Bridge and the National Bridge, the fourth bridge is at Route 20 or?
Highland.
Oh, Highland, I'm sorry, Highland. Okay. And so of all of them, which is the oldest one?
It's a good question. I haven't really looked into National as much.
You know, you always know all the answers to everything. I knew there was something. No, that's okay.
Even Babe Ruth struck out once in a while.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Paul?
Thank you, Mike, as always, for bringing exciting engineering projects before us, and thank you to both of the companies being here today. This is no small undertaking. And I think all of us can go back and remember not too long ago where one of the top news stories in our country was about our failed bridges and our failed bridge systems throughout the country and how they have not been maintained. But I always like to point out that here in Elgin, we have done a spectacular job of making sure that we have maintained our bridges. We allocate capital funding over the years to make sure they are properly inspected and, and, and maintained so that they are not dangerous to pedestrian or vehicular traffic going over our bridges. So I appreciate that. And then this is just the next logical phase of what we've always done in Elgin. So thank you for bringing this forward. Mike, you mentioned the 80% federal reimbursement that we're crossing our fingers, hoping that we can get, we can get? Or has that been confirmed that we are getting that money?
Phase One has been confirmed.
Phase One.
So the agreements sit around the agenda tonight and hopefully on the council's agenda in two weeks. We have been confirmed for 80% funding on that. In discussions, we've had many discussions with I.DOT District One, Bureau of Local Roads. They're the, the group that handles this. They've indicated that it would be highly unusual if we didn't get 80% funding for future phases, but it's premature on their behalf to make that commitment at this point. So this will progress in somewhat of a stepwise fashion. But based on their past practices and funding levels, I, highly unlikely that we wouldn't. In addition to that, both Trans Systems and Alfred Benish are going to be looking at other funding alternatives. One of them was mentioned would, could be related to, to bike routes and pedestrian movements. We're still all trying to figure out the, the federal capital bill, the IAJA, that went out. And there are, there's programs within that that can be used for bridge funding. So we'll continue to explore other options and, and again, to minimize hope. I mean, I, I feel pretty confident that we won't go above 20%. With some luck, we might go below 20%.
That's exciting and, and really good to hear. So thanks for your work on helping to secure that, that grant, that reimbursement money and continuing to look for even more. A couple of other questions I had, and I think Councilwoman Rouschenberger kind of touched on this. Right now, obviously, Kimball Street is two-way traffic. Chicago Street is one-way traffic. Has there been, it doesn't sound like there's been any thought to potentially, is, is there a possibility to design Chicago Street for two-way traffic in the event that at some point we end up going back to two-way traffic on Chicago Street?
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll build the bridge to a designed width, right, to get the number of lanes through there that we need to get through. At some point, I don't think it's unrealistic to say we could reconfigure those traffic patterns and remove the old lines and put new ones down and et cetera. I, I think that analysis, though, would have to encompass a bigger study area to look at
Absolutely.
traffic flow throughout downtown, because whatever we do there is going to impact center and different, everything. So.
Yes.
So at this point, our, our plan is to move forward, continuing the same one-way patterns on Highland and Chicago.
Okay. A couple other questions I had. Sustainability components. I didn't see, unless I missed something, is there, was there a requirement on our part that sustainability components be included as part of the design process, or no?
Not in particular. What, what type of components?
Well, I think we already talked about the, the bike lanes, obviously, continuing that. But then just in the materials used, because I've, I have read about some toxic materials that have been used in the past for bridge construction that, you know, we may want to stay away from, or maybe that there's an issue with them. I'm just kind of thinking about
Yeah.
how do we meld all of these different plans that we've had, you know, we put together as a city, our, our sustainability plans, our DEI initiatives? How do they end up showing up in these very major projects like this that are, that come before us? So my, my first question was around the sustainability component, and the second was around the DEI component, the diversity, inclusion, and equity component. I did notice that both firms are partnering with a number of other firms, and some of which, in particular, I think it was Trans Systems is utilizing Wang Engineering, which is a, registered as a DBE and a MBE business, and that Benish is utilizing our own local, I don't want to mispronounce the name, it's Rubino. They're local here to Elgin, and they're registered as a DBE and, and Women Business Enterprise. So I was just wondering if that was something that what, that we were requiring on our end? Because I would hope that we, we would start doing that more? Or was that something that these particular firms kind of did on their own?
The firms did that on their own. We did not have any specifics for DEI components within the, within the, the request for qualifications.
Were there other, other firms that I'm missing that may, that were included in, in, in your partnership? That, I, I mentioned the two that I'm aware of or that I saw where there are other firms.
HLR is a woman-owned business as well.
HLR is.
So. Metro Strategies as well is using it. So I don't want to say by chance that we did get some of that DEI component, but again, we didn't require it as part of ours. You know, and, and from the sustainability perspective, some we can certainly look into. Again, we didn't specify can't use this or must use that. So much of this is controlled by the Department of Transportation on material specifications, et cetera. So from a staff perspective, we take their lead, because they're going, all this will have to be approved ultimately by I.DOT. So I may desire not to use Class XYZ concrete, but if that's what the specifications require, then that conversation would have to happen at a higher level with the Department of Transportation. And I'm not trying to dump this in their lap. They do a great job. But, yeah, we, we didn't venture into that. I think we could certainly look into, if there were concerns over certain material types or building methods, we can certainly look into that. I would, I would quite honestly have to lean on the expertise of our, of our partners here.
Those are, those are my questions. Again, excited to see this work moving forward and, and definitely look forward to working with both of you. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. Thank you to the gentleman here from the two firms for being here too as well. I was with everyone the whole time until this gang, this gang chart showed up here in the presentation. Haven't seen one of these since Grasco to look like this. It kind of like put me on edge a little bit. But we, I appreciate the detail. I will say that. Couple of questions. The bridges, and correct me if I'm wrong, both fall in our current TIF districts. When you talk about the $8 million, the estimated $8 million cost that the, that would be the city's responsibility, are you thinking that you would like to, to use future TIF dollars if reaffirmed towards the finishing of this project?
I would look to, for the guidance from our chief financial officer, quite honestly, on that, to best determine what funds are available and what are best used for this project. Personally, from an engineering perspective, public works, funding is funding in some senses, so.
Mr. Manager, you got to.
But.
The central area TIF is currently scheduled to expire in 2025, and with the capital projects that we have lined up, we're not at this point planning to fund from the central area TIF, but look to the Capital Improvement Fund for the city's contributions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
But that could change if the TIF is expen, it is.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I added that in there, right? It is, it is. Okay, all right. Just wanted to get some clarity on that. Another question, with the bridge itself and thinking, you know, from the bridge, from where it actually literally ends, and we're talking about bike paths and improvements to sidewalk, are there certain parameters that you have to work within? For example, whatever work needs to be done or could be done within 1,000 feet that is connected to the bridge is, is an eligible expense? Is that's, is, is that an allowable use or something similar to that?
I'll, I'll take a crack first, and then I'll look to, again, to our experts. But typically, you have to define what are called logical termini, so what makes sense for a bridge replacement. If we were to petition to the Department of Transportation that logically the end of this project should be Center Street, they would probably say, well, not quite. That's a little bit beyond a bridge project. I would have to inquire, and again, maybe someone can answer, if we can expand the project to include other elements? I believe that's possible. It's likely that would be at our cost 100% or a high percentage, but.
Yeah, and, and while, and while he's coming up to maybe speak to that a little bit, I bring this up because recently I received an email from a resident that was, I was just going to say a little bit disgruntled about the bike pathways. just going to say a little bit disgruntled about the bike pathways on Chicago Street, and he was saying, oh, I love biking back and forth, but it's a little bit, it's an issue for me. So I just wanted to speak to that resident's concerns, but just in saying, you know, we can take all the improvement that we could, that we'll take, especially if, if we're getting funding from elsewhere to, to take care of it. If that's a possibility, I would like to see it extended as far as possible, knowing that there are certain parameters that you have to work within.
Yeah, I, I mean, we'll explore all the funding opportunities we can and take advantage, or recommend to take advantage of those if we think they're viable. But I, I know at some point then that the bridge project now becomes a bike path project, and those are different funding sources, and again, I, you know, I'd, I'd be, I'd like to hear what that concern is, and maybe it is something relatively easy to take care of, but it could also, again, sort of like the two-way traffic downtown, might actually be part of a bigger bicycle and pedestrian movement analysis of where. So he said as a cyclist, he loves to, to cycle, but there's something about getting across Chicago Street that is, is troubling to him.
Yeah, well, I, I passed on that.
Is it just right at Chicago, or is it at 30?
It's, it's Chicago Street, he didn't really specify. I already passed it on to the Sustainability Commission
Yeah.
More poignantly to our City Council Liaison, that'll take that up with the Sustainability Commission, so I'm not trying to give that to you, but since it was fresh in my mind we're having this conversation, that's why I bring it up.
You know, I think items like that will come up, hopefully will come up in the, in the public comment sessions that we'll have.
The two different firms.
Mm-hmm.
I actually really like that you're having two different firms, and I know you have your own reasons as to why it worked out that way, but I think in this particular case, with having two projects essentially happening at the same time, but just like in, you know, different phases, and having people who live in this community, two being the ones that are heading up this project, I think that's just really cool to, to happen. And I think that using more firms, you know, outside of our, I actually, our usual suspects, I think is a, is, is a way to go, so I'm happy to be doing, on behalf of the city, to be doing business with these two firms. So with that being said, I look forward to the next meeting and getting out of Phase One, and we're now, you know, moving on to talking about Phase Two. That's going to be exciting. Oh, one thing before I go. It was mentioned, the, the walk path along the river, and I think there was a photo, a rendering of showing the underground, and extending that, you're saying, and if I missed this, I hope, hopefully I didn't misinterpret this, but you say there may be a chance to have additional funding because we're extending the walk path along the river?
There could be funding related to bike path extensions or improvements that we might qualify for by doing this work, so we'll investigate that. I don't know for certain if it's going to be available to us or if this would qualify, but it's that type of activity that, that our consultants will identify to say, hey, there's a program for funding bike path improvements, there's a program for pedestrian crossings of intersections, and all these things that tie into what we're doing. And again, we'll look to see if, if we qualify for those, we'll, we'll pursue that funding.
Yeah, and, and just so that I'm clear, I'm talking about paths going north-south along the river, not the going over the river conversation that we were having earlier. But you're saying that it's, it's all connected, they're funding out there for it, anything connected to it, that's what we'll go after?
Correct, yeah.
The extension of that, okay.
We don't have an exhaustive list today of all the possible funding sources, but we'll work to, to scour through all these programs, and the programs change, and the criteria changes, and the funding levels change, so
Okay.
But that'll be part of this whole thing.
All right, well, I look forward to what, you know, five years from now, when everything is said and done, and we can marvel and take pictures at it, so thank you for all of your hard work on this, and good luck to the firms, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Mr. Shaw?
Just a couple, you were asking about, they were asking about the age. I, I do recommend a website called Bridge Hunter, very interesting. I'm just glad that we've not lost any ponies on our current bridges. You will see some historical artifacts on the website. I did want to touch on the ages of our other two bridges, of Highland and National. It does look like there's some similar ages. I'm assuming these two bridges are being targeted first just based on our annual inspections that we do? Is that why these two bridges are selected first? Would that be an accurate statement?
That is correct. So there, there's different criteria that they're, that they're rated on. So Kimball is mainly being driven and qualifies for funding because of its condition.
Okay.
And I, I always want to be careful about talking about low condition ratings. The bridge is absolutely safe, drive over it, but it's to that, it's dropping over time like any structure does.
Sure.
So it is qualifying primarily on its condition. Chicago Street, all bridges are also rated on their geometry, how wide the deck is, how they align, and Chicago Street primarily qualifies under geometric criteria. It is the, the condition, the physical condition of the bridge is better than Kimball Street, but again, it still qualifies, and that's why we pursued the funding, because it met the qualification criteria. Highland and
National.
National, thank you. Not quite yet.
Not quite yet, okay. And you'll have to explain to me later geometry conditions that, that make it apply. Just, just to confirm, the, from a scope perspective, this is from the wa, from water to sky, correct? This is a complete rebuilds project scope? This isn't reusing existing foundational elements? Is that accurate?
Well, again, that's part of the Phase One process.
Phase One, okay.
Going into it, we expect that Kimball will be a full reconstruct.
Okay.
Because of the higher condition of Chicago, it may only be what's called the superstructure, everything above the piers.
Gotcha.
But again, we'll investigate that, and, and this process takes time, and we inspect these things regularly, so if time moves on and the condition moves down
Yeah.
The qual, you know, the elements that qualify could change, but going into it, that's how we're approaching it.
The other question I had
Which is part of the reason maybe on the schedule why Chicago Street is a shorter construction period and possibly could go first.
I got you, okay. Does the dam removal under, by Kimball, does that impact just the Kimball Bridge, or could that actually impact the Chicago Bridge project as well?
Part of this process will be to, to perform hydraulic studies to confirm that.
Okay.
My opinion is it could.
So it could impact, it could impact both.
Could, but unlikely that it will impact Chicago to a, a level that requires us to change our design approach. Kimball, obviously, much more affected by the dam.
Gotcha. One question on the historical nature, I know, I, I do understand like that, that Highland and Chicago both have those historical elements and that historical look. I guess just the concern that I have is those bridges were created at different areas when we had different materials and different craftsmanship and, and different things, and so I guess I was concerned, are we going, you know, if we try to maintain that same historical look with new materials and new processes of building and things like that, is that the best way to go? So that's what I'd be kind of curious to see as we kind of go through this. What does that really look like?
Mm-hmm.
To make sure that it's also a, you know, a maintainable bridge, that it's, you know, got that, that longevity, because it's, it's harder to patch those historical bridges as well and, and, and maintain some of those, because you can, you can see over time some of the areas where, you know, we have had to do repairs, it was, it's much more challenging to do those repairs on those historical bridges and make them look nice still, I guess you might say. It, it shows differently.
Make them look seamless, right. You can see on our current structures, there's some of the railing that was patched with standard concrete, and it, it stands out.
It's just hard to, 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 to maintain that.
We did one two years ago, though, that we colored the concrete, and I bet you can't find it, so.
I have a guy.
Now I'm curious.
I think those were my questions, and I think everyone else kind of piled on, but no, this is very informational. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, all of you.
Okay, anything else? I think we can move on, we have to, but before you guys can start, you have to have money.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Publitz and I were at a meeting just the other day, and it's about, was about the infrastructure bill with Representative Lauren Underwood and Mitch Landrow, he's the president's, I guess he's the, he's the purse keeper for the president on the infrastructure bill. And there's a lot of money there, but competition is going to be fierce, fierce. And this will take effort from us at a local level to deal with our U.S. House Representatives and U.S. Senators, to get ourselves, this is money that we can see in four or five years, it might be there for us, but we got to get ourselves on the list and work at, work with that. This is not a state, not going to be a, entirely a state project, there could be federal money that could come into this through the infrastructure bill as well, but it's going to be challenging, let's put it that way. Okay, we need a motion, Mr. Manager?
Move for
Second.
And you want to do both of these at the same time?
Yeah.
You can do the vote on D, and then we'll just call E, and we can take care of it that way, thanks.
Okay, this will be for item D.
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved in second for approval, any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0.
So item E is the Phase One Design Engineering Services Agreement with Alfred Benish and company for the reconstruction of the Kimball Street Bridge.
Who, who's approval?
Moved in second for approval, any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Item F is a resolution for improvements under the Illinois Highway Code for our Larkin, for the Larkin Avenue resurfacing project in 2015.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Item G is a resolution for improvements under the Illinois Highway Code for work conducted in relation to the Central Business District Trapples, Traffic Signal Interconnection Project in 2011. And just for greater context on this, Mike has been, and Dead in the Rocky have been working with IDOT and their accounting staff to reconcile project expenditures going back these years. This is, again, the resolution enables IDOT to close out the records and the books on this, and as you can see, none of these items are at any cost to the city.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, discussion. Mr. Shaw?
I was just going to say, every good leader gets to inherit somebody else's problems once in a while. Sign of good leadership.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Item H is the resolution, Resolution for Improvements Under the Illinois Highway Code for the Route 31 slash State Street-Wing Street Intersection Improvements back in 2009.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Item I, Stained Traffic Enforcement Program Grant for Occupant Protection and Impaired Driving Enforcement with Illinois Department of Transportation. This program, commonly referred to as the STEP Grant, provides funding for a variety of preventative and enforcement initiatives by the police department. They include occupant protection checks and impaired driving enforcement. Program's goal is to reduce motor vehicle crashes, fatalities, and injuries, and to increase the use of occupant protection devices to reduce, and to reduce impaired driving. All city costs incurred with these efforts are reimbursed through the grant.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Item J is the purchase of automated external defibrillators, 22 of them. The city maintains 22 AEDs, and they all require replacement. These AEDs are located in city buildings and police vehicles and provide the city employees and citizens with the, with the ability to render aid and potentially save the life of citizens experiencing cardiac arrest.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's moved in second for approval, any discussion?
Did we skip item I?
No. So we just Mr. Thorin?
Yes, I'd just like to comment on that, how much I value this. I manage the defibrillators in some of the social clubs and just had those upgraded, and the one at the American Legion has, in the last maybe seven or eight years, saved two lives.
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Announcements from the council?
Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. I just want to remind the public that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and not just a month to wear your pink, but to encourage all of the women in particular in your families, but also men, to be aware of breast cancer and get regular screenings. There's some information I wanted to share, and I want to make sure I get to it, about the Illinois Breast and Cervical Cancer Program offers free mammograms, breast exams, pelvic exams, and Pap tests to eligible women in Illinois, and this program has been providing breast and cervical screenings to women since 1995. Any woman, any women who are enrolled in the program and diagnosed with breast cancer through the program are eligible to receive treatment benefits. Eligibility requirements include living in Illinois without insurance and being between the ages of 35 and 46 years of age, and younger women may be eligible in some cases. Breast cancer is one of the most common form of cancer in women, however, if it is detected while still in its early stages, breast cancer can be successfully treated. I know from personal experience, during the pandemic, a lot of us, including myself, kind of skipped out on regular screenings, breast cancer screenings, colonoscopies, all of that good stuff that, preventative screenings that are very important to our health. So I just really want to encourage women in our community in particular to make sure we get those mammograms and encourage all of the other women in our families and, and friends to, to get their regular mammogram screenings, and that this is an option for folks who may not have insurance. The phone number to the Illinois Breast Cancer and Cervical Cancer Program is 888-522-1282, and it's also available on the Illinois Department of Health's website. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? I have one announcement. If you have time, Saturday morning at 11 o'clock, please join me out at Bluff City Cemetery. We'll be, be with a number of groups that have spent quite a bit of time out there. They've restored 500 Civil War veterans' grave sites and remounted them, cleaned them, and we're going to rededicate those and have a short ceremony, about 45 minutes, it'll be starting at 11 o'clock on Saturday, and should be a nice day and should be a great